Calling the meeting to order, please. My name is Lauren Noether. I work in the Solid Waste Management Bureau in the Waste Management Division of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services that we often fondly shorten as DES, so I'll refer to it that way for the rest of this. I'm serving as the Presiding Officer for this hearing. It's Tuesday, July 10th, just a hair after 6:00 PM, the time and date given in the notice of this public hearing. We are at the Woodbury Middle School Library, as indicated in the notice, located at 206 Main Street in Salem, New Hampshire. If anyone can't hear me, just raise your hand. I think so far we're good. This hearing is for the express purpose of receiving public comment on the application for modifications and rule waivers to solid waste permits. The application and waiver requests were submitted to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services by L., period, L., period, and S., period, Inc., that's for the record, of 87 Lowell Road, Salem. LLNS, Inc. is the permatee for both a closed, unlined, construction and demolition debris landfill that holds solid waste permit, DESSW-TP-94-030, and the wood processing facility that has permit, DESSW-SP-94-002. Both are physically located at 87 Lowell Road, tax map 8838, Lot 125, Salem. This location, as I understand it, is subject of a subdivision proceeding with the town. LLNS Incorporated, the permatee, is an active corporation registered with the New Hampshire Secretary of State to conduct business in New Hampshire. Under New Hampshire Statute, RSA 149M, our State Solid Waste Management Act, and the Department's Solid Waste Administrative Rules, solid waste facility owners or operators are required to obtain a solid waste permit before managing such facilities. Here, LLNS has submitted two permit modifications and waiver applications. First, it seeks a permit modification to its standard permit for the processing and treatment facility to increase capacity, subdivide the property away from the construction and demolition landfill, and waive certain setback rules. LNS has also submitted an application for a permit modification for subdivision of the facility property of the now-closed construction and demolition debris landfill, and a setback waiver. Paul Gildersleeve, who's seated at the table to my right, will describe these in more detail for you later. The applications are under review by New Hampshire DES. The purpose of the hearing is to receive oral testimony regarding LLNS's applications to help inform DES's review. For the record, again, notice of hearing was published in The Union Leader, a statewide newspaper, on June 6, 2018, and on the New Hampshire DES website under the Solid Waste Management Bureau, SWMB Hot Topics. This hearing is being held on the date and at the time and location indicated in the notice. If anyone needs a copy of the notice, it's at the information table near the entrance to the room. We have a number of other, excuse me, DES persons present here. Again, sitting next to me is Paul Gildersleeve, a staff permitting engineer assigned to review these applications. We also have here Todd Moore, who's the Administrator of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. He's to my right, your left, up front. And in the back of the room, hiding out, is Jamie O'Rourke, a hydrologist in our permitting and design review section, and Brad Flag, our legal intern, who's on the other side of the room, to assist with the smooth running of our hearing. We have representatives of the applicant company seated to my left, your right. We have Frederick Bruno, who is an environmental compliance manager with Reenergy Recycling Operations LLC, a limited liability company managed by Energy Holdings LLC. And I'm just going to ask him to stand and tell us, so we can all understand how Reenergy Recycling Operations LLC relates to the applicant here, LLNS. He wouldn't mind doing that in a loud voice.
Well, Reenergy is the parent company of LLNS. It's just another facility, owns four facilities, so it's just being one of them.
Okay, so LLNS Incorporated is wholly owned by Reenergy?
Yes, by Reenergy Holdings, yep.
Okay. Great, thanks. We also had Rich Geiser, Regional Manager for Reenergy Recycling Operations, and Aaron Burnell in the back? Yes, no? Yes, okay. Also from Reenergy LLC. David DeVito's here. He's the General Manager with LLNS Incorporated. As noted on the agenda, if you picked up an agenda, we have three parts to this hearing. First, Paul Gildersleeve is going to explain why an application for a solid waste permit is required for the LLNS facilities, and will provide a brief description of the criteria DES uses to determine whether to approve the applications, deny the applications, or approve the applications with conditions. Paul will also explain where we are in the application review process and what the next steps anticipated will be. Second, representatives of the applicant, LLNS, will provide a description of the proposed permit modifications and waivers that the applicant seeks. After each of these presentations, we're going to accept brief questions from the audience, but these are questions limited to clarifying the presentations you have just heard. At this stage, the questions are not public input as comments, but are instead meant to simply explain anything that may be unclear in the presentations. If anyone should have a question, please identify yourself by your name and street address or affiliation and ask your question. There's a microphone right on the lectern there. Third, we're going to accept public comment on the application for the record, and anyone wishing to make oral comments or submit written comments for DES to consider in its review of these applications may do so during this portion of the hearing. Instructions for providing written testimony are in the Notice of Public Hearing located at the information table. If you intend to speak this evening and provide an oral comment, please fill out one of the yellow testimony cards and pass it to Brad, who'll bring it up, and we'll call on people in the order I receive them. I know that there's one individual who has to leave early, so we're going to move things along a little bit so that that person can have a chance to speak, probably taking a break after my comments and before Paul's explanations, in order to get him in. Doesn't look like we'll have to set time limits to make sure everyone gets an opportunity. There's not a huge crowd here to speak, but we certainly want to give people enough time to say what's on their minds. If you provided oral testimony, we also encourage that you submit the testimony in writing to DES. Written comments can be submitted to DES until Tuesday, July 17, 2018, at 4:00 PM. This is one week from today, so understand that that is the deadline in order for DES to consider your written comments. It's 4:00 PM on Tuesday, I'm sorry, yes, on Tuesday, July 17, 2018, a week from today. So there are the directions for submitting the public comments in the public notice. If you fill out a yellow testimony card, you will automatically be included on the list of contacts to receive a copy of the DES decision on these applications. If you don't wish to speak but would like to receive a copy of the decision, please provide your contact information on the sign-in sheet at the information table. If you would like to make a formal comment today orally, fill out the yellow testimony card again and give it to Brad, and he'll bring it up, and we'll call on you. Are there any questions about the procedure so far? Just that overall procedure. Seeing no hands raised. Logistics, emergency exits. There's one right to the back of the room here. In the event of an emergency where evacuation is appropriate, we'll automatically suspend the hearing pending further notice. Please exit safely but quickly. Meet outside, let's say, towards the middle of the parking lot here, and we'll make sure everybody gets out safely. Brad will bring the sign-in sheet if there are names on that. Restrooms are located to the right and the second right, around the corner here. Please note that we are audio recording everything said at this hearing for the record. The audio recording will be made available on the department's website under the Solid Waste Management Bureau's Hot Topics page. When speaking, use the microphone, please, so your comments can be captured for the record, and clearly identify yourself by name and address at the outset. Are there any further questions at this point? I see none. Is there anyone who's filled out a yellow comment card who would like to speak? I see none. Well, I'm going to turn it over then. Is there anyone who wants to make any oral comments? Because we're going to jump to that part, even though we're a little bit ahead of the game, and...
Shall I hold this, by the way?
If you could hold that, that'd be great. You'll have to turn it on.
I'll have to turn it on.
It's a little button there.
That's beyond my limited capability. Well, no, I think it's on. The blue light is on?
Yeah.
I think it is.
My name is Ross Moldoff. I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Salem, and I'm here simply to let you know that the property line setback, well, I guess I should say, even going further back than that, that this site has been permitted by the town and regulated, in a sense, by the town through the approval of a site plan way back in the 1980s when it was first developed and before the current ownership was there. And so we've been involved with the facility for many, many years. Recently, with the current ownership, we've had, I think, what's a very positive relationship, and they came in at some point a while back last year and asked for approval to put the, add a property line on the property, and that ended up having to receive a variance from the zoning board because some structures were located too close to that property line based on our setback requirements. And after the variance, they actually came to the planning board and received subdivision approval from the planning board. So that has been addressed. The planning board was informed at that time that there would be a capacity increase at the facility. That wasn't something that was subject to the jurisdiction of the planning board, but they didn't raise any comments about that, and all those, the variance from the zoning board and the subdivision approval from the planning board were both subject to public hearing, public hearings and public notice also, notice to abutters also. So that's about all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the state has anything, but that's the only comments I wanted to provide tonight.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
For the recording, this is Todd Moore from the Solid Waste Management Bureau. The town's variance, is that just a clear variance? Are there any encumbrances or conditions on the variance from the setbacks?
There were conditions on the approval from the planning board. There were no conditions on the variance from the zoning board. That was relatively simple. Some of the structures that were on the site were located too close to the proposed property line, so there were no stipulations on that, but there were some conditions on the approval from the planning board, one of which was approval from the State Department of Transportation, as I recall. Wasn't that?
No, it was from DES. We didn't know if it was necessary, but that's what you asked, that's what you put on the condition, yes.
Yes. That was all.
Thank you.
Is that the sole condition, Mr. Moldoff?
No, I can get you that.
I actually have it here. I can make that available. So that was, the first one was, you know, DES approval, which we weren't sure that was necessary.
For the record, this is Mr. Geiser speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Rich Geiser with Reenergy Recycling. I do it all the time, I'm sorry. The other thing was to make sure that we put in permanent boundaries where the new line was going to be, and that once we received the DES approval, to send it into the town. And then lastly, before we did any work at the site, that we needed to notify the town in writing. But our effort out there is not to really do any work at all. It's not what these modifications are about. Those were the four. I do have that, which I can make available to you.
Sure, that'd be great. Anything else, Mr. Moldoff?
That's all.
You want to add?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to the main program, or the way we're rolling it out, and Paul Gildersleeve is going to give some remarks regarding solid waste permits in general, and in particular, this application.
Are just four copies sufficient?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gildersleeve. I'm from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Waste Management Division, Solid Waste Bureau, or NHDES. I'm the Permit Engineer for the operating LNS Incorporated Lowell Road Wood Processing Facility, i.e. the processing facility, and the closed LLNS Incorporated Construction and Demolition Debris Landfill, i.e. the landfill. I'd like to describe the criteria and standards by which we evaluate whether the applications for these facilities, you have come here tonight to listen to, are eligible for a permit, and why we have the authority to make this decision. NHDES was given statutory authority to administer a permit program for solid waste management facilities through the law known as Reby Statutes Annotated, or RSA 149M, which is the Solid Waste Management Act. Under this authority, NHDES has established rules, known as the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules, or the rules. These rules include permitting and design requirements for solid waste facilities, such as processing facilities and landfills. As Lauren mentioned, both the processing facility and the landfill currently have permits. These permits help NHDES enforce the rules and statutes relating to solid waste facilities, and help us to safeguard public health, safety, and the environment. LNS has submitted a Type 1A permit modification and waiver application to modify the permit for the processing facility. LNS has also submitted a Type 1B permit modification and waiver application to modify the permit for the landfill. This public hearing is required by the Type 1A permit modification. I'll talk more about LNS's applications a little later. Now I'd like to give you a background on both the operating processing facility and the closed landfill. The landfill operated commercially from 1979 to 1983, and was closed in 1986 with a soil cap. Closure plans were submitted in 1994 to formally close the facility. The landfill contains approximately 275,000 cubic yards of construction and demolition debris, or CND, material. The landfill currently is in two lots, a 26.4 acre lot and a 35.0 acre lot. It shares with a processing facility. The permatee for these facilities, LNS Incorporated, is proposing to divide this 35-acre lot into a 26.4 and a 7.65 acre lot, with the landfill located on two 26.4 acre lots and the processing facility located on the 7.65 acre lot. While the landfill is closed, the processing facility is operating. It sorts and separates recyclable and reusable CND, incidental recyclables, recyclable material, and virgin wood from non-recycled materials, which are sent for disposal. As of LNS's 2017 Annual Facility Report, the processing facility recycled 88% of the materials accepted, which includes 84,786 tons of materials reused to produce daily cover and grading material for landfills. In total, 21,262 tons were disposed of, and 157,260 tons were recycled or reused in 2017. The processing facility is classified as a processing treatment facility that is privately held and has an unlimited service area. The approved storage capacity is 10,478 tons, or 38,744 cubic yards. The approved throughput is 175,000 tons per year of CND, recyclables, and virgin wood, received from New Hampshire and out-of-state sources. Throughput, just for your information, is the average weekly tonnage to be received at the facility during the quarter in which the most waste is anticipated to be received. LNS Incorporated has submitted the applications to NHDES to modify the permits for both the processing facility and the landfill. LNS Incorporated proposes to modify the throughput capacity of the processing facility from 175,000 to 200,000 cubic yards per year. LNS is also applying to waive the setback requirements from the proposed property line that would separate the two facilities. While NHDES is not reviewing the proposed property line, it is reviewing the setbacks from this property line. LNS Incorporated is requesting to waive the 50-foot setback on the processing facility side of the property line, and to waive the 100-foot setback on the landfill side of the property line. They would like to substitute these setbacks with a 50-foot easement on the processing facility side of the property line, which would provide access to the landfill from Lowell Road and the processing facility. Waiving these setbacks would allow LNS to subdivide its property, placing the closed landfill and the operating processing facility on two different lots. If the setback were waived, the proposed property line could be located on approximately the limit of waste line of the landfill, instead of at least 100 feet from the limit of waste line. Again, this is the waiver, this is if the waiver is granted. The limit of waste line is the waste perimeter of the landfill, just for informational purposes. If the waiver is approved, the stockpiles of the CND process facility could also above the property line, instead of being at least 50 feet away. The rules that require setbacks are meant to enable the landfill to be maintained and inspected to allow for a buffer between the facility and the abutter. Since LNS owns the lot, and would continue to own both lots and both facilities, it is currently the abutter. To comply with the intent of the waiver rules, LNS Incorporated proposes to replace the 50-foot and 100-foot setbacks with a 50-foot easement. The easement would run with the land and mean that this easement area would be available to access the landfill regardless of the landowner. Besides these technical changes, LNS Incorporated is also proposing to change its permitted name for the processing facility from Lowell Road Wood Processing Facility to LNS Incorporated. Therefore, the facility name and the permatee name would be the same. Reviewing these applications consists of two steps, a completeness determination and a technical review. The first step has been accomplished. NHDES has deemed the applications complete. We are now holding a public hearing on these applications as required by the rules. Since these applications are complete, they are now undergoing a technical review. During this technical review, NHDES reviews the applications to ensure they address all the applicable aspects of the rules, such as meeting the processing and treatment facility requirements. These requirements include siting, design, operation, and closure of the processing facility. An example of siting includes setbacks, and these applications are applying to waive the setback requirements along the property line between them. Design requirements include storage areas, processing, and throughput. Currently, the processing is done inside the building, and material is stockpiled outside. This application is not proposing to change these aspects. However, LNS is applying to increase the throughput from 175,000 to 200,000 cubic yards per year. LNS's operations include separating usable portions of material from construction and demolition debris received at the facility. Closure means removing all the solid waste material and cleaning the site after operations have permanently ceased in order to minimize future risks of environmental damage. The rules also require the processing facility application to include both the positive and the negative aspects, or impacts, the proposed facility modification will have, why the proposed change is necessary or desirable, and show the facility modification provides a public benefit. Public benefit from ENV SW 405.04 includes three requirements. These requirements are, one, irrespective of the source of the waste, total quantity of waste transferred by the facility on an annual basis to New Hampshire landfills and New Hampshire incinerators shall not exceed the total quantity of waste received by the facility from New Hampshire generators. So in other words, a landfill can't landfill more waste than the facility is accepting from New Hampshire sources. The facility shall operate or be part of an integrated system which operates in a manner which separates and diverts recyclable materials to authorize facilities for reuse, and avoids disposal of recyclable materials and aligns landfill with a leachate collection system. And during each calendar year that the facility receives waste, the permatee shall communicate with the host solid waste district, as specified in ENV SW 1105.12. Salem is its own district. The rules require that the changes requested by LNS be incorporated into specific documents, such as the operating, closure, and financial assurance plans, as well as design plans prepared and stamped by a professional engineer licensed in New Hampshire. The operating plan includes authorized and unauthorized wastes, and procedures on how wastes are managed. The closure plan includes how to formally close the facility and remove the waste. Financial assurance includes the costs needed to close the facility, the processing facility. The funds for these costs are provided by the permatee. The money is accessible to NHDES under a financial assurance mechanism, such as a bond. These revised documents, which are, again, the operating, closure, and financial assurance plans, and the design plans, are included in the submitted applications. Besides the permit modification applications mentioned, we also review and evaluate waiver requests in accordance with the rules. The waiver application must show that an exemption from complying with a rule will, one, not result in an adverse effect to the environment or natural resources of the state, public health, or to public safety; two, not result in an impact on abutting properties that is more significant than that which would result from complying with a rule; and three, be in keeping with the intent and purpose of the rule being waived. The application must also show one or more of the following conditions are satisfied: strict compliance with the rule will result in an adverse effect on the environment, public health, and safety; strict compliance with the rule will result in a circumvention of the goals and objectives of the state's solid waste management program, as specified in RSA 149M13, and the state's solid waste management plan; or, three, strict compliance with the rule will result in no public benefit, no benefit to the public, and will cause an operational or economic hardship to the applicant. In reviewing these waiver requirements, economic, technological, practical application, and safety issues shall be considered in evaluating a demonstration of the above criteria. However, the application of rules shall not be weighed solely on the basis of cost. NHDES reviews the applications to ensure they meet the requirements of these rules and statutes. This process can be iterative while the applicant addresses NHDES's questions. NHDES has a goal, has as a goal either 120 days following the receipt date of the complete applications, or 30 days after this public hearing, whichever is longer, to make a decision in writing on these applications. NHDES has several options in making their decision. We may deny, approve, or approve the applications with conditions. The applicant and all persons and entities to whom the applicant was required to provide a copy of the application will receive a copy of this decision. A response to public comments will be included with that decision and sent to all those who made a public comment. Are there any questions?
Okay, well, seeing none, no questions, clarifying. Paul's presentation, we'll turn it over to the applicant or representatives of LNS to provide a description of the proposed facility or modifications for which they're seeking this particular waiver and modified permit.
My name is Rich Geiser with Reenergy Recycling, of which LLNS is one of the four facilities under that umbrella of Reenergy Recycling. As part of background, I'll try to keep this as short as I can. Back in 2016, as we saw additional, a lot more construction, like a construction explosion in the Northeast, including eastern Massachusetts, southern New Hampshire, what we saw was that the amount of construction and demolition waste, and construction and demolition waste is generated through either demolition of a building, new construction, people that are modifying their facilities, or their personal homes. So we saw an increase in the amount of construction and demolition waste that was coming through. And this started really in 2016. So with the assistance of Fred, who is our compliance manager, we looked at where we were relative to our permitted capacity. The current permitted capacity, as Paul mentioned to the group here, is 175,000 tons a year. We noted that by Q3, and Q3 would take us through the end of September, that if we didn't do something to change the way that we were receiving waste and limit the amount of waste that would be coming into our facility... of waste that would be coming into our facility, that we would probably exceed our permit limit of 175. So what we did as a management team is we stopped taking in all trailer waste. We diverted loads that normally would come from our inter-company facilities to other sites. We actually got to a point where some of our larger customers that might bring us 15 loads a day, we would end up reducing them to, say, five. And all they would get for that particular week would be five. We also truncated our operations and did not accept waste on weekends. On Saturday, we don't accept waste on Sunday anyway. And then right around that time was the Christmas holiday, which was Christmas and Thanksgiving, excuse me. We shut down and didn't accept waste those days. So through those efforts, we ended the year about 177,000 tons a year. But we recognize that all that material that we turned away from our gate, for the most part, was going into a landfill where 0% was being recycled. As was stated earlier in the hearing here today, all of our facilities, LLNS in particular, recycles about 80%. So that is consistent, and it's a necessary piece in the overall New Hampshire solid waste management hierarchy to make sure that you recycle instead of landfill. Again, we have very high recycling rates. So at that time, that was 2016, towards the end of 2016, we sat down with our engineer, NOBS Engineering, and we sat down with them to talk about what would be necessary to increase our permitted throughput capacity. And we collectively came up with a number of 200,000 tons a year, which is roughly about 14% increase over our current permitted capacity. So we were going to engage with NOBS to help us prepare the permit modifications. The early part of 2017, we had a kind of like a permit scoping meeting with DES to talk about what we were intending to do and what we needed to do in order to submit the necessary documentation to DES to grant us the permit to increase the capacity. Similarly, in 2016, another significant event took place with the emergence of a emerging contaminant, which is the PFC issue, where EPA came in under the, along with DES, and we took water samples, groundwater samples, and surface water samples of the closed landfill. As we stated earlier today, that landfill's been closed for roughly 30 years. And we noticed that in a couple of locations, that we had elevated levels of PFCs beyond the limit that EPA had identified as cause for concern. So today, we continue to work with DES to get a better understanding of the extent, scope, and how we might mitigate that long-term. Those discussions are still ongoing. However, the consequence to having PFCs be identified in this site, and this was historical materials that are creating this situation, we think, is that it significantly impacted the company's ability to borrow money to do improvements to our facility and help grow our business. So we had that challenge, and we also had the challenge of not having, we thought, enough capacity in order to accommodate the residents here and stay consistent with the state's goals to recycle and not landfill or incinerate. So our first step, before we even submitted our application to DES, was to reach out to the town of Salem. We've always had a good relationship with the town, and we ended up sending to them a description of what our intents were, intentions were, relative to increasing the capacity from 175 to 200. Ross, on our behalf, took it to the planning board, and they approved it. That was step one, which is in the permit that really reflects the increased capacity is our Type 1A permit. When we started to put that Type 1A permit application together, we recognized that we were now going to be held to the new siting standards, which required that if we were located next to a landfill, it was a 100-foot setback. If we were located next to another property line, it was a 50-foot setback. So hence, the Type 1A permit modification application that we have in front of DES is to take it from 175 tons per year to 200,000 tons per year, and also to receive a waiver to the 100-foot setback from the landfill, which now is a new line that we were able to move forward with the town as far as subdividing the existing property and also the 50-foot setback criteria. So that is the application that's before DES to review and approve. Now Paul went through a very detailed list of all the things that we have to satisfy relative to the DES granting of variance, and it's quite extensive, as is the permit application that has since been submitted to DES. And so we feel very strongly that we've answered all those questions relative to the Type 1A permit modification. The only difference, there really will be no difference in how we currently operate our facility if we're granted the 200,000 tons a year. It's just that in those busy times, that we won't have to curtail the construction and demolition waste that would come to our facility to be recycled and divert that to other facilities. It's going to allow us to continue to accept waste at our normal rate through the end of the year. That's the Type 1A. The Type 1B, which is really relative to the landfill, when we ended up looking to subdivide the property and really separate the landfill from the processing facility, which we, as our leadership team in our company, believe that once we can separate that from the rest of our companies, it'll increase our ability to get additional funding to help grow our company, create new opportunities, new jobs in the state of New Hampshire. So that was really our goal. Even though the landfill was existing, because now we're submitting a new permit modification, a Type 1B, we have to satisfy the 100-foot setback requirement. And as a consequence, that's why there is a waiver application associated with a Type 1B. We're not intending to add any new equipment. We're not changing traffic flow. Really, the existing facilities that are there today are sufficient, from an equipment perspective, from a personnel perspective, to handle the increase from 175 to 200. An example being, during the summer months, when there's an increase in building activity, as you would expect, our volumes typically increase. And what Dave does as the facility general manager, he'll run extended hours, he'll bring in additional staffing, so that we can run two shifts instead of a single shift. And that allows us to be able to bring the material in, process it, not exceed our storage pile requirements that we can have on-site. And approving these two things will allow us to do both of those things.
I actually have a question. I don't know if that's appropriate, but just for clarification purposes. And maybe you said it and I missed it, so it'd be good to reiterate it. You're not seeking an extension of hours or a change in the hours that you're operating thus far?
We are not.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for clarification purposes? And if there are not, then we'll move back to public comment. We've heard from Mr. Maldoff, and if anyone else would like to make comments, we'll take your yellow card and invite you up to speak at the microphone here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tell us your name to begin with, please.
For the record, my name is Lawrence Best. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief for the Town of Salem Fire Department, so I'm here on behalf of the Salem Fire Department. I'm just here, kind of like Ross Maldoff was, just to speak on behalf that LLNS, we've had a good relationship with them. They've complied and been cooperative whenever we've asked them to do something with the fire protection features of their facility. And whenever we've had incidents at their facility over the years, they've been responsive and very cooperative during those incidents and worked with us to mitigate whatever we had to do there. Again, simple, I would be happy to answer any questions from the state or anyone, if anyone has any questions.
Are there questions for Fire Chief Best?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Anyone else wishing to submit oral testimony? Seeing no hands raised, then the hearing is going to be officially closed for the testimony. Let me just say a few other things. And the time right now is, does somebody have the time for the record? Oh, yeah. I'm going to remind folks that written comments can be submitted to DES before 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 17, 2018. We can accept written comments by fax or email. Directions are provided in the public notice at the back of the table where Jamie is standing. And when DES issues its final decision, it will be publicly available on our website. If you provided testimony, you'll be included on the notification list using the contact information you gave on the yellow testimony card. If you did not fill out a yellow testimony card but would like to receive a copy of the decision when it's issued, please legibly provide your contact information on the sign-in sheet available at the information table. We thank you for attending and expressing your interest in the permitting process, and do appreciate the comments. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.